Okay, so we're starting the uh policy committee meeting at six oh two. Um okay that one way, so we'll just go ahead and we'll bring up twenty seven hundred. Is it back?
Yeah, keep going. Oh yeah, I think she already pulled up, didn't you?
No, no, those are new ones, sorry. Oh, no, 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 that's fine. So we'll pull up this one.
So I'm just, I'm gonna keep track of the ones that were taken to the board meeting, like we're good with forty two hundred, right? Mer- that's going to be.
As far as I know, yeah. What's, what one is that? Oh, the community relationships?
Yeah, that's the one about the um PTOs and PTAs and all that, yeah.
I think, I mean.
Yeah, we, I think we were done. We added um.
We worked on that last Wednesday as well. Okay, we did, and we, yeah, 'cause there was.
There was zero feedback about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, it was, we removed booster to being completely school support organizations to encompass PTOs, PTUs and boosters. Um, I do think, did this one, did I have questions for you on this one? Where's the little make it go bigger? Where is it?
Uh it's blocked by, you're gonna have to click out of it and then, or it's not gonna let me.
If you click, where is that forty two hundred graph, it'll minimize the length and maximize the yeah.
Is that, oh wait, this one?
Yeah.
Alright.
Just, I just wanna, if we get through a lot, I just wanna make sure we have the right ones that were taken.
Gotcha. Okay, so these highlights, maybe they were highlights to talk to.
Before, this one was a highlight before, I thought. Organization, well, no, that one wasn't. Next one must be consulted prior to the expenditure of such funds.
I remember we highlighted some things because uh. Okay, that one we wanted to ask the board, are we good with a million? Um, the rest of this got lined out. So I think it was, okay, so fundraising, sponsored. For installation and maintenance, funding a home playground cost twenty, they should be. This one must be consulted prior to an expenditure of such funds.
I think you guys were thinking along the lines of.
You shouldn't have to ask the principal to spend your monies. I think, right.
I was saying the same thing because we're not, it's, we're not in charge of their money.
Right, which is also why we highlighted up here on this whole um. Yeah, and we wanted to talk about district officials. What does that mean? Because we have employees that are involved, like specifically in the booster club. Um, in a governance capacity, like president, vice president, hey.
Hey.
So.
Is that on?
Yes, we are recording. So um, we just were like, because like within PTUs and PTOs, parent teacher organizations.
Right.
The teachers are in there, but they don't control it apparently, is what they said. But with respect to the booster club, well, you know, when the president is an employee.
Right, but they're also a parent.
Right, that's where it was like, is, so, but then what's the difference if there's a teacher that's a parent and part of their kid's PTO?
Yeah.
But they're not supposed to, I mean, so I think that's, I know the district officials, it's like, what are we really saying? Is it?
Yeah, I think we probably have to define that. In my mind, I think that, I mean. I don't, I don't think it's school employ- I, my role was it couldn't be the treasurer. I don't think that any kind of school employee should be dealing with the money, 'cause I just, if there's any issue there, it just. Um, but I mean, when I was on a PTU, um, like when I was a media keeper, I mean, so we did have staff. That were the secretary or the note taker or the whatever, they were never the president, but they were the, so. And they are a parent, so they're volunteering and, you know, they just had to work through doing it outside of their work time.
Mm-hmm.
So, I never see, saw it as an issue, never was an issue for us.
Okay, but.
And because the, I mean, again, in my experience, the treasurer goes through all the money, they, the entire board has to approve on it.
Right.
So I mean, it, it, it was a non-issue if it was a staff member.
The board, meaning.
The board, the PTU board.
PTU, right. Because down here, um. School support organizations must submit annual reports on income, expenses and balance sheets to the board upon request.
This board or which board are they talking about? Because in most of the bylaws for PTUs, it's part of their monthly, like every single meeting we had.
Okay.
There was, every board meeting we had and every public meeting we had, they went over, they went, this is what we spent the money on.
Okay.
Every board meeting, they had to have approval on where, how, what they were spending the money on. So it was like, we talked about it monthly.
Okay, 'cause.
So.
Was there.
'Cause I don't, I think if you don't define that, then people are gonna see this as you as the board.
Well, right, and that's where we were, I, we were, I was like, why does the board need to be involved in any of this?
I don't think they do. I think the PTU board has to be involved and the booster board, whoever those board members are, they have to. That's part of their bylaws, but the school district board shouldn't.
Right, but see, it's, we start out with the board, with the assumption that it's the school board, because that's who makes the rules.
Right. And I think in that paragraph it is, right.
But then down here, it says school support organizations may be formed, yada, yada, yada. Uh, receive the approval of the school principal, superintendent and the board, which would be us again.
Right.
In order to be recognized. So if we are now flopping back to the board that oversees.
It needs to.
Or that is part of the organization, yeah, which is totally, I think, appropriate.
Right, yeah. Right, they have to have oversight for out there, yeah, but it's there, it's the booster and PTU boards.
Right. Okay, um, because here it was board superintendent, principal designate. So that board right there says to me, school board, because it's coming before the superintendent, which the board of whatever organization. Um. And so that's why we added upon request, because I think the only time the board would really want to know what's going on. Yeah, is if there's a concern, if there's one organization that's got oodles and oodles of money, just stockpiled, well, we need to know why, what for, what's going on here.
Right.
And.
Yeah, 'cause in most of the bylaws, you're supposed to specify what it's being used for, if you did fundraising, I mean, that's all part of standard. So I just think we have to read, we just have to call if we're, we need to designate between the two, so it's when is the school board versus when it's PTU booster board.
Well, and see, I don't know necessarily that, 'cause I think their own bylaws is what governs how they do what they do. This is governing what they do for the school district.
So do you wanna take out any reference to the board and then that?
I don't think so, in this, I, 'cause I don't, I don't want it to be that, this isn't a policy for the board to be overreaching. It's just to re- a reminder that the board is the final overseer.
Right, for all things related to.
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, 'cause we were reading through here and we're like, wait a minute, no, it's, and like, yeah, there was a lot that we're like, I don't understand. That actually made it seem more of an overreach.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but uh.
Yeah, but.
So I don't know if you wanna read through.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, but most of their, I mean. All of those meetings, they have to get approval from their board to even spend the money, how it's being used, they do a report out every month. The boosters do the same thing.
Yeah, because like if they lose, and this was um. Yeah, down here it was talking about that if they lose the ability to use the district name logo or mascot, then they have to give all their money back, money to the district. It's like, why?
Right, you wanna give back.
That's standard procedure for any kind of entity, if the entity is dissolved, you have to name where its assets go, so.
Well, it's not dissolving it, it's just revoking its ability.
To use the logo.
The district school, the district or any school name logo.
Oh, 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 I thought you said it was, oh, okay.
No, well, well, it's implying that by revoking the school name, logo or mascot.
They're no longer represented.
Correct.
So they're no longer part of the district. And if that does happen, that means that they are dissolved and they do have to. Their assets have to go, is that way with anything, a chamber of commerce, uh, whatever, their assets have to, somebody has to, and that will be in their standing rules and in their bylaws.
Okay.
Would be in their bylaws, yeah.
Um, we'll say, you know, if there is a dissolution, what happens to it, but the board can decide what happens to it, because ultimately. Um, you know, it's still district money and student money and, I mean, it's all for the district, it's just another arm. You know.
I guess my question is, is it really district money though, because like if they have a donation and then they buy T-shirts and then they sell T-shirts and, I mean. We never had, we've never given any money to that, we've never, I mean, it's part of, that's their money.
Right, but it's, but I mean, it's, it's for the benefit of the district and the kids, right, the, the kids, so in essence, yeah, they're doing all the work and all that.
Right, right. Yeah.
But it still belongs to that school or those students or what have you, so in that sense, yes, it is district money.
Right, right. But I guess I feel like if something was dissolved, let's just say that it's an elementary school and it's, and it, they're dissolved, whatever, and they were raising money to do a playground equipment. You, if you have the money, you'd still do the playground equipment.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Because then that's what we promised patrons.
Right, right, that would still happen, but it wouldn't happen after a dissolution, that would ho- hopefully happen before the dissolution and then everything, anything that's left afterwards would have to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
You know.
Right, okay.
Um, and then they should have that all lined out also. Um. Let's see if I can get there.
So I guess it's good we're back on this one again. Um.
I just wanted to make sure before we took it to the board that there, we were all good with it.
No, I, I appreciate that. Um, and there was no comments that came back on it. Alright, so under financial records, um. See, and here we go again with, you need to provide it to the board. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I like where you added upon request, but I don't think it should be reported to the school board.
But do we need to include language that governs? That tells them the expectation of what their rules should be?
You mean like that they have to follow their bylaws?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you could say that, yeah.
'Cause see, here it was, they should use a fiscal reporting period, July one through June thirtieth.
Yeah.
Um, and one of the parents brought up, but if they're already under the governance of the PTO organizations that don't do that.
Right, mm-hmm. Yeah, they have their own guidance, right, right.
You can pause, exactly, so.
But all of them have some, some guidance, they can't form that group without it, is my understanding.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to find out is, do we need this language in it or no?
I don't think we do, I think what you guys stroke through is the right call, but.
I'm just gonna look to see here, but uh. I was looking to see if ISBA had any of those, uh, any statute references or IDAP rules, but of course they don't, not on the one I'm looking at.
Here we have fiscal affairs of school districts.
Yep.
Uh, fiscal year payment and accounting funds, auditor.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, then Idaho State PTA insurance premium form, Idaho School Activities Association current rules.
Right.
And Office of Civil Rights Title Nine Athletics Investigators Manual and Education Programs for Activities.
Yep, okay, so that's, yeah, which had, so, um.
Which is federal.
The statute for student funds.
Mm-hmm, is um fiscal affairs of school districts is thirty three seven oh five, oh, seven oh five, I said seventy one oh five, okay, that's the, I think that's our policy. Uh, thirty three seven oh five. And see what's interesting is, all of this blue language is new, it wasn't in the old policy.
Because this is all ISBA?
Right.
Yeah, and ISBA had it in there for a reason, which, I mean, we can do whatever we want to do, but I, I think one of the reasons we're here is because nobody in the district. Knew what any of it was, nobody said, here's how it's run, here's how it's done, here's who, nobody knows anything, so granted, they might have their own stuff. But where's the continuity of the thing? What is the expectation? And that's really the board's governance. What is the expectation? How should they be doing it? When should they be doing it? And if we still don't have their paperwork to see how they're doing, I mean, are they all doing it the same? They should be. There should be no difference between one school to another, except for maybe if you get, you know, crossing elementary to secondary or something like that. Um. Okay. Yes, okay, seven oh five is the activities funds. So you wanna bring that up so you can actually see what the statute says? Uh, thirty three seven oh five.
But this is about activity funds, this isn't about uh PTUs?
Well, it's any money, any, when they say activity funds, any funds that are raised.
But this is that the school raises, this is an outside entity raising the money, I mean, like, none of our, the school, we do the yearbook sales. We do the interscholastic activities, our PTUs and boosters don't have anything to do, they might help, they're selling T-shirts, but. This is specific to the school district doing it, or the school itself.
Mm-hmm. Well, those are the examples they give.
Mm-hmm.
And this is not the limitation of what the board, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I guess one thing for the governance is just the accountability of where the funds are, so if the board does have a question. 'Cause we've had that come up in the past and we never got the answer for it. Um, and what is the expectation of continuity of everything, so that if you're moving from one school to another, everything's the same. You know, you're not one school reporting one way versus another school reporting another way or, um, what have you. I haven't read through the whole um policy yet. Do they not have standing rules? They only have bylaws, that's it? They govern their organizations?
I don't know.
Okay.
Some of them are PTOs and some of them are PTAs.
And what is the difference in the two?
Um, parent teacher association or parent teacher organization.
Right, but I mean, what?
I don't think it's very significant, other than the national one is a PTA.
Okay, so we don't know that that impacts whether they have standing rules or not?
I mean, I know, I have been a part of both a PTA and a PT, and I've never, in twenty something years, I've done this.
Never seen.
Every single board I've ever been on or participated in, it's specific to PTA and PT, they have standing rules, they have guidelines that.
Oh, they do have standing rules, okay, okay.
They all do, mm-hmm, they might call them bylaws.
Well, bylaws and standing rules are two different things.
Well, but they call them, they're all inter- they're interchangeable, they call them the same thing, it has all the procedures of how they're supposed to. Uh, work, so.
Okay.
It, that's how they, that's how they li- listed them, it tells you what you have to do, how you run things, how you report your money, so.
Yeah, I don't know how they're formed or who, who they're, you know, but they, they're not the same, so if they're calling them the same, that's incorrect.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Because bylaws and standing rules are two different things, so. But I don't know what they for, I don't know what they have, we just have to figure out what they, you know, what the board wants, I guess. You know, whatever the governance piece is, not even really what the board wants, but just so that, you know, everybody's on the same page of. What's kept or where it's at or, you know, all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, I mean, most of the bylaws are what govern the PTU and only the board.
Mm-hmm.
Of the PTU can change any of the bylaws, but it is kind of how they're standing.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It's their, how their standing operating procedures happen, that's how they dictate who does what.
Okay.
It defines each of the roles, what's the president's role, what's the treasurer's role, all of that.
Right, yep.
Other thing that I would question is, um. This to supervise and regulate, including by contract with established entities, those extracurricular activities that are by definition outside of or in addition. To the regular academic courses or curriculum of a public school, in which extracurricular activities. Um, shall not be considered to be a property, liberty or contract right of any student and such extracurricular activities. Shall not be deemed a necessary element of a public school education, but shall be considered to be a privilege. And what was your? Well, are we considering the entities of booster clubs, PTAs, PTUs, whatever, extracurricular activities? 'Cause everything they do is out, is, is above and beyond any form of academic, it's all extracurricular and financial support of.
Yes, it would fall under that, um, because what they're talking about here is if you go back and look at, um, where, are you at? Five, oh, two R and five twelve, okay, so, yep, and the reason, yes, that it distinguished it there is because it is outside of education.
Twelve, yeah. Right, they didn't even list that on the policy.
Yeah.
Five twelve governance of schools, yeah. Whoopsies, well, that's pretty.
A lot of that, yeah.
Come back, we'll see. What are you doing?
Coming to the back door, let's get backwards.
Still over there now, I guess. So I'll just come in here and I'll just, yeah, that's good, that's good, here, there, and up here. Okay, so. On that note, do we? Or sh- I mean, I guess I don't know where to go with this. Do we put this information back in? Or do we just keep it out, it wasn't there before?
The blue, that's ISBA's new stuff?
Or, yeah, the blue is all new, yeah, it's all ISBA's new stuff. All we had was this little bit and these couple paragraphs. And then, of course, we rewrote some of it.
Yeah, well, they put the fiscal year in there because that's the school year, that's what the fiscal, uh.
Right. However, if they are being governed under their own national organization and they're required to run January through December. I, I don't wanna.
Yeah, the booster organization is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna have a, have a policy that won't have a violation.
Yeah, no, that's fine with you, they're saying that's why they put that in there, because that's their typical, that is the.
Okay. Correct.
Reporting period.
Which I would think it could be, but I don't know, and so I'm not gonna say it's requirement.
Right.
You know, maybe we could say maybe from. But I don't really, I mean. Maybe.
Yeah, I don't know why they have all this in here.
The high school, this thing I didn't know. Prohibits uh remuneration of any kind of, from any source outside the school, outside the school board and return for services rendered. In instructing or coaching any high school athletic team. Said prohibition shall also apply to any coach. What does this have to do with booster clubs?
I mean, I think that's why it was removed, I wouldn't include it, and we also have a gift policy about what the staff.
Yeah, this doesn't.
And our goal was to not, you know, muddy the waters and have language in five different places.
Yeah, it's all a bit repetitive.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I don't know if instead of going through their parameters of what they, financial records and audit.
Yeah, I don't think we need any of that. The only thing I see in there that would probably be applicable and I don't see a problem with is having them, like everybody else. Um. You know, an annual report to the board, you know, it's just like we do the other committees, it's just filed, yep, we got it, they showed it, here it is, kinda thing.
Right, and we did add in here, where did it go?
At the end of all there, blue, it wasn't there, but I don't know.
Was that the end of a sentence, where did it go?
Down, I think it's highlighted, that big, is that?
Oh, there we are. So under this approving activities.
Oh, huh, yep.
We do state, you know, school support organizations must submit.
Mm-hmm.
Reports on income, expenses and balance sheet to the board upon request.
Yeah.
Um, but we might also. Um, but we might also we could state, um, school support organizations uh must submit or provide uh their bylaws, their, all of what's governing them to the district office or somewhere so that there is, there's a center
To the superintendent.
There's a central location.
Right.
If anybody has a question, we can pull their records and find out instead of having to hunt it down.
Right.
I, so to me, that would be a compromise in being able to take out all that other language so that we're not saying this is how you do it. We're saying show us how you do it.
So, bylaws have to be submitted to the superintendent annually?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would, uh.
Well, the board should be overseeing all that. I mean, that's the board's job to oversee everything that happens with the taxpayers' money. And they're operating under the grace of the district. Inside our schools, there should be an accountability to the people. You know, and not only that, it helps also like the one that wanted to put the playground equipment and they were told though they couldn't do it cause it wasn't fair to everybody in the district. Um, I think the board should have been made aware of that so they could have said, no, if they raised the money, let them put in the playground equipment, you know.
How is that?
Perfect.
Because that way at least everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah, I just think it's about being transparent.
Right, um.
I think he didn't number himself.
Hmm?
So, he didn't number himself in the cause it's not said.
Oh, okay, so it's all bylaws.
Yeah, up at the top, I think, you mean, bylaws should probably be capitalized.
I'm just trying to figure what I'm trying to say.
Oh, it does say the organization has to keep on file in the superintendent's office a record of officers, bylaws, mailing addresses, and other pertinent information as may be required by the superintendent. So, that part is in there.
Oh, well, see, here we have annual financial reports that provide a full accounting of the financial dealings for the year shall be submitted to the board for review. Um.
And then you have by request, like down the
Right, um, let's see here, though, um. For the year, so it's an annual, so it's a one set of year. Um where is that other language?
Right there, you were just on, uh, which one? The one about the superintendent, you know, that one.
So. Yeah, is it this one? Okay.
That blue one, yep.
Here, you form this one. Have you recognized the organization? Oh, yeah, okay. Okay. I don't know what other pertinent information there would be.
Yeah, I don't.
The organizations must keep on file in the superintendent's office, a record of officers, bylaws, mailing addresses, and other pertinent information period. Okay, so with that then
Can we take that on the five?
down here, well, yeah. Must buy bylaw policies as well as the following. This should be school support organizations. Okay.
Two number five.
Okay, so this is just saying if the board asks at any point in time, they need to be provided. Up there, it's saying annually, you have to provide it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay? I mean
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So, we'll keep that one, we'll keep the audit out, and we'll keep that out.
Yeah, cause what if it's the middle of the year and some question comes up, you know?
Right.
It's like, yeah, we got the annual, but
But about whatever, I So, I put that paragraph back in, um, due to the fact that
Mm-hmm.
if we've, uh, maybe we need to speak clearly in the sense that the use of the name, logo, or mascot, if that's revoked, then that means that you're done. Cause that doesn't, cause to me, I'm like, so they, so they take, say I can't use the mascot, but I'm still the bed key for a PTO.
Right.
But they don't want me to use the mascot?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like the only time that would be revoked is if there's probably a criminal act, don't you think? Like
Oh, yeah, I can't figure out why. I I I, something nefarious had to have gone on.
Exactly.
And so, we're saying you're done.
But then, would it be that they're done or just, I mean, if I find the bylaws that dictate that person is now removed and no longer, and then someone else is stepping in, so is the organization done?
I don't know, we're saying the organization.
Or is it just the board within that organization has now been removed? You know what I mean? Their bylaws would dictate that.
I think if it's I think if it got that bad
Yeah.
the board better know about it. This board, you know, cause then we got a lot of other violations if it ever came to that, you know?
Yeah. Correct. Right.
Exactly. Right.
Um.
Yeah, because it le- I mean, there'd be legal, there'd be, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, are we good with it as it stands?
I think so.
Okay, I'm gonna take this portion off, make it no longer yellow, cause we just made the decision. And then, the other thing is just making sure the board is oh, the fundraising, this, the principal must be considered consulted prior to any expenditure of such funds are to be used. There was question about, you know, the principal's not gonna be consulted if they're buying, you know, oriental trading items to stock the store for the kids to use their, you know, bear bucks or whatever.
Right, right.
I guess I read that not about what they bought, it's specific to the funds raised. So, not what you, like, if I'm buying a bounce house and then I'm gonna charge, I'm not asking permission to buy the bounce house, I'm asking permission if we're gonna use the funds from the bounce house for something, the principal's consulting, cause it's about the school. So, it's what you're doing with the funds once they're raised, not the precursor to, if you're, like, if you decide you're gonna do candy bars, I mean, I've never been in one, but that's not part of the discussion, but the whole team agrees that we're doing candy bars, and then what we use with the money is where everyone's consulted. Does that make sense? It's the funds that are raised. That's how I read that. But maybe it's both.
I don't know, because it's saying fundraising by school support organizations is considered a usual and desirable part of the program. Okay, the specific fundraising activities must be approved and advanced by the principal.
Mm-hmm.
Funding for installation and maintenance when playground equipment is donated shall be a consideration. That is just a random sentence stuck
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think it needs to go down here.
Yeah, specifically with all the equipment purchased.
Yeah. I mean, it needs to stay there, but
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but, but then, this paragraph is the principal must be consulted prior to any expenditure of such funds.
And I, in my mind, I'm, when it talks about specific fundraising, must be approved in the, in advance by the principal, so again, if my fundraising activity is gonna be, I'm doing triple play, we're gonna talk about it. But then, when I'm expending the funds of what was raised from triple play, the principal has to be consulted. What are we using this money in? And a- and again, I'm gonna go back to bylaws, like, the rules are that if you're, when you're doing a fundraiser, you're supposed to tell people what the money's for.
Mm-hmm.
It's not supposed to just be, I'm fundraising just randomly to fundraise, so am I doing it for, you know, a school dance, am I doing it for a prom, am I doing it for playground equipment? Are we, whatever, that's where the principal is consulted and has to get permission of, this is what we're, cause you can't just, I can't to the PTU say, well, I want the playground equipment, and then the principal's like, yeah, no, I don't need this, whatever, you know?
Okay. Okay. Okay, but again, going back to, I I get where you're going from, but if you read this on a word-by-word basis,
Yeah.
it's just saying that all money is raised, whatever we wanna spend it on, we gotta get permission from the principal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if the PTO is supporting, like, um, uh, uh, again, the little stores where the kids earn their money and go buy it. The principal has to approve that.
Mm-hmm, I mean, they do now.
Okay.
Because you have to do, you're doing it during school hours, so there has to be discussion about what it's gonna look like. Like, when we did a Christmas store, we had to talk about how, when is it gonna happen, how our class is getting in the mix, the logistics of it have to go through the principal. So, I mean, I guess it's, the conversation has to happen. If you're gonna do something outside of school hours, then the principal wouldn't need to, but if it's happening during school hours, the principal has to be involved.
Right.
So does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and so they need to be consulted about the activities which need to be approved in advance, and then they need to be consulted again for, to spend the money they raise.
Right.
Okay. So, then we can remove this highlight. So, I don't want the board to be like, why I have that highlighted? Like, well, cause we didn't order it. It's a reminder to ask a question. All the equipment purchased must need funding installation, okay, announcements. Okay, so that all flows much better. Um. Okay. So, is there anything else up in here that we think we need to either put back in or do we think?
Um, we handled donations somewhere else, or why didn't we take the donations out and the audit out? Cause somebody else is handling that, or?
Well, because it's, that is going to be governed by their bylaws, so if we have the bylaws, that'll dictate that.
Hmm, okay, gotcha.
And then the donations one, um the school must meet all legal requirements, including for I don't know why we took that.
Specific to playground equipment?
It is.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can put it back in.
Well, I think it's already in the equipment part.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's already there.
But this is specific to, okay. Well, I'm wondering
I think where you have it makes more sense.
Cause this is saying like what I purchased.
Mm-hmm.
Or you could say or donated.
Or donated. Yep. There we go.
It's gonna bother you.
Yes, there we go. I'm really getting pretty fast with this alt shift. Bye! This property of the district must meet all legal requirements, including safety codes. And may be used or disposed of in accordance with the funding for installation, okay. So, I think that states
Yep.
Yeah.
what it was saying down here. Okay.
A little bit more of a consistency.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's sort of
Let's just put it up together. Okay. The district reserves the right to modify the use, the names of the students when the district change. Yeah, well, whatever. Okay, so I think we're good to go on forty two hundred?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. And then, we are going to twenty seven hundred. Okay, so we had oh, this is twenty seven hundred P, so there were no comments about twenty seven hundred at all. Um.
Like, that's just the overview.
Right.
Is there a way you can make it, well, I guess it will be on one page, can we clean it up?
Yes, it will.
That was easy. Good job, Michelle.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on this one, remember, the twenty seven hundred?
Uh, no, didn't we already fix all that last time?
We did, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, the twenty seven hundred P.
Yeah, because we had a question about the, uh, adding up the credits. They didn't equal
Whatever it was.
We fixed all that.
Yep.
Um I double click, um, yeah.
Oh, you can just click once on her. Okay, so there are some comments and, um on the twenty seven hundred?
There we go.
Oh, we didn't get it.
I do not agree with only allowing up to two people to receive the award. I believe that you should have set requirements and possibly you need to make them harder.
She
But every student who needs those should receive the title. I teach many of the upper and students and I would be unable to choose which students, uh, should get the title. Please know that it is not as simple as teacher should just choose one. Well, okay, um, and then, okay, there you go. I'm curious why the classroom size is changing. Alright, so, this, there are two staff members, okay.
And the one on the back.
Yeah.
Were they both staff members?
Well, this one's a staff member and this, this one's from one staff member, and this one's a staff member
And then one parent.
that doesn't agree with the
Yeah. This is actually from several staff members.
Okay, yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
The counselors, they filled it out together.
To avoid confusion, eliminate the reference to forty eight credits needed to be earned. Students are only required to earn forty six for graduation.
And so, we have that it's a minimum of that, but very cross right there, but we require forty eight, or that's what we have in the past. Because remember, we're also adding the extra that history one.
Maybe, okay. What if we say students are expected instead of shall be? 'Cause that kinda seems a little bit more
Yeah.
harsh. Well, maybe I get their point though, because if.
Yeah, is it forty eight or forty six?
Right.
If they.
The the legal requirement is forty six for for that's what statute is, it's forty six.
Right. Right. So we should just take out, but if we're not getting if the district's not gonna issue a diploma unless they have forty eight, then the forty six needs to go.
I feel that must have something.
Okay. 'Cause yeah, if it's. So this is nine six six fifty.
I mean, this is truly the breakdown, just so you guys can see it. This is the requirement.
Right.
Right there. That's all that's required.
What's that site? I wanna bring up, is it?
It's the Idaho, it's the State Department. If you put in Idaho high school graduation requirements, it'll pop up.
Well, what's your?
It's from the state board, but it's on the Department of Education site. So it's right there. So that's where it says the twenty nine and we had. So we probably need to change ours back to twenty nine, not thirty.
Well, okay, it's.
But then remember, we added one more. That's why we have thirty, 'cause we have six social studies instead of five.
Right.
So that's why we have thirty.
But see, it states the local school district may establish graduation beyond the minimum.
Right. Right.
That's what we're doing.
Right.
So if we're doing forty eight, then we need to keep it forty eight.
Right.
And then just take off the forty six?
Yeah, because there's no point, I mean. The reality is if a parent comes and they're like, I wanna register my kid, okay, well, they need forty. Well, then they come back and they argue, well, no, by law, they're only required to have forty six. The reality is they are correct. However, as a condition of being part of this district, we're requiring two more credits. If they don't want to meet that, then they may choose to go somewhere else. Because now we have this wonderful open enrollment that you can pop in at any school you'd like.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, I don't know how much of a challenge that is.
Yeah, I know, I can't answer that. I have heard that being an issue, so.
I don't wanna be there.
I do think the language is confusing.
Yeah.
Because it I would just get rid of that whole note thing. I mean, what's the part of the note? Yeah.
The note thing.
It was added for clarity to try and accommodate um the recommendation.
Oh.
Because.
So students are expected to earn a total of forty eight for the graduation requirements.
So but I do think if we soften this.
Mm-hmm.
Students are expected to earn
Yeah.
total forty eight credits in order to complete graduation requirements.
Yeah.
Right, so we have.
And then the.
The nine language arts communication one. We do have the six math.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is where this is what I highlight. The two credits must be taken the last year. That's no longer true. And so in the red at the bottom is the actual language from the statute of how they have it listed out. So I don't know if you just wanna replace that whole section with the actual verbatim.
Earn to eight or more high school credits of mathematics that include algebra two or higher than uh before their senior year. Alright, has completed. Okay, so mathematics, six credits are required. Secondary mathematics include um.
Yeah, there's a big long this applies.
Right, it's the same thing that I have up here. It's from the statute, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay.
And then it actually breaks it down. Your students must complete secondary math in the following areas. I mean, even list the statute that it comes from. And then the two credits of algebra, algebra one, and then the two credits of geometry, and then two of yours choice.
Okay. So we could.
Totally the six. So that we have to take out, 'cause it's not, yeah, that's what I but I didn't wanna tweak that until you guys. So. And then.
Just, I don't know, delete. So six credits are required.
Yep.
Um, but actually, I don't think we need this part either.
Right, you have that. And then you get a little narrative of what could be offered.
So maybe we could just, because this is specific to secondary.
Mm-hmm.
So let's just do, since it's already in red, thank you very much. Mathematics includes.
Mm-hmm.
Integrated mathematics applied, business, algebra, geometry, trig, fundamentals, probability and statistics, discrete mathematics, and courses in mathematical problem solving and quantitative reasoning, including mathematics taken through career technical education program. Dual credit dual credit engineering courses and computers aligning to the state standards for crates nine through twelve. Science, so is this for science versus, oh, this is for math, is it?
Yeah, it's all for math.
Okay. Um.
Engineering courses.
Okay. Let's remove this, 'cause we don't need that there. Unless you think it should stay.
No, you're good.
Okay. Secondary or students must complete secondary mathematics in the following areas.
This just defines the. Oops. Are you saying that last one too? Do you wanna take that off, or you just go like bottom?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The other thing though is does this, so go back, does that one, two, three, is that the same, keep going? Uh, is it the same as that right there?
Algebra, geometry, secondary math for students.
I mean, it's kind of, this is a little more detailed, but it's one in the same. So do we just transfer that up to the top and that's better?
Algebra.
I don't know. This defines more of the options that kids can take better. Like the integrated math specific to I E Ps and all that.
Mm-hmm.
I just think it's clearer.
I didn't need to fix it and paste it in here. Mm, instead of.
So if we move.
So where's the Excel spreadsheet that we got this back in? Where we weren't given that?
No, it, did you link it in?
Was it linked into the um?
I know it's, I know it's in the uh drive, but I.
Okay, that's fine.
I didn't link it in, that's why I asked you. But I know it's in the drive. We put it there.
I know it's in the drive, yeah.
Yeah?
Disappointed, we don't have more people here. Was it this way last time too?
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't here. I missed the last two.
How was the wedding?
It was so good.
Yeah, your boy's wedding? Ooh, yeah, cool. How fun was that? Yeah.
Yeah, it was good. Yeah. It was perfect.
That's awesome.
A lot of work, but it's perfect.
Yeah.
So Olivia and I were crazy people before I left trying to, I mean, we spent days trying to, you see the the or our orange list, our to do of just trying to get all the policies to match. So we got all the annuals done, like, so it's a long list. Uh, the August uh added land stock, but we got it all done so that we could.
Yeah.
'Cause I was on that week and so Olivia did it by herself.
Awesome, we.
I'm sure you're wrong.
Good job. We got, we got a lot done last week, yeah.
Good job.
So board.
She didn't call me one time.
No, I didn't, 'cause I, you were gone. You heard meaning to just do what you were doing.
You got it all done.
Board policy stakeholders input is where it's at.
Okay, thank you.
No, stop it. Yeah, it was good. Yes, and I especially decided we feel old.
Hold on, alright, twenty seven hundred. Hmm. Jeez. There we go. Of course. Oh, someone I did not, sorry.
It's hard to do this little print. At least it's for me.
Yes, yeah, well, and my eyes, you know.
Yeah. Well, I tried to widen it on the spreadsheet so that it's not this big long and it's more.
Yeah. 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 But I like how they did this, their whole suggestion.
Horizontal, vertical. Yeah, that was super helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was super helpful.
So. Do we like this layout? Now that I redid it.
Yeah, I did it on.
'Cause it kinda matches, don't we?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so.
I just like the explanation better.
Is there like an explanation of what the eight credits would be, like like this?
No, uh, well, I mean, there might be a little bit more, but it's you have to take an English class and it's just an English class. It's not title anything differently for English. But I'll look up if they have something different. Where math, there's different options for math.
Right, but I mean, is it?
Well, there's that many different options for English.
Well, do we consider um composition? Do we have?
I don't think it's that. They don't, um. Let me see if they give you any more information. That is not my understa- it just says it's uh eight or more English and then you have to have speech. Where it's like math, we'll say you have to have algebra one and geometry, so.
Where did we find the this, what it is? The?
From the State Department.
Okay.
I can, oh, that language that I pulled, it's from the actual statute, what you, let me.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, see, what did, uh. It was thirty three, I think. Uh. We had it in that, uh, the narrative that we erased that when we took it off. Um.
Those were dates.
Uh, no, I thought there was one that had it in the top part of the law, but maybe I don't, I don't know. Um, it's it's in an, it's in I D A P A, isn't it?
Should be.
Yep. Yeah. There we are. Yeah. It's just language arts. And then you have speech. Where the math adds more. It's just not titles like math is.
What's that?
It's just not like titles like math, that mean about any.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Um, but I think.
But, yeah, yeah. Do you wanna have consistent language? So it just says includes. Is that what you're doing?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, so at least we got something. I mean, it's. Alright, so if we revamp that, so that's nine, two, four, six, it's fifteen, and then. Okay, what is this?
And this one, we're on this.
Yeah, ten. Okay, dual credit engineering and computer science.
Isn't that what's up in the red?
Yeah, it is.
So I just copied it twice?
Well, no, I think this was already on the document.
Oh, okay. Just lower.
And why it's there now, I don't know. Yeah. Um. So this is just a comment about the fact that, okay, science.
Mm-hmm.
Do, uh. Oh, is it gonna make me do?
Yeah, so this, I think, is where they were getting all the the comments that they made. About the middle school credits and the advanced opportunities funds and.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Does that make sense, or is that too complicated? For science.
Mm-hmm, it's good. It's good.
Okay, I don't think, do we need this here?
I don't think so, 'cause it's up in the other one too.
Isn't it up here?
Yeah, it's right there. You just must've spread it out. I think it makes more sense to have it all.
Well, I think it would be, okay, what if?
I mean, why don't we just take the state document and use it? Because and we're, so we're changing that because their science is the opposite. It says two credits on lab and four credits are student choice. And then I can see what they're saying on this, the confusion between what.
What document are you looking at?
Um, the actual uh graduation high school, the minimum graduation requirements.
The one that I was looking at?
Well, I pulled, I opened the P D F from their site.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Okay, um What I'd like to do is take
Mm, beautiful.
Hmm.
You got it.
Why do I have to keep turning it off? But I don't know how this is gonna fare out, it might look really bizarre. 'Cause if we put the explanations Let me take this, I should've put it above this. Just all sorts of spaces, you know, I'm good with that. So if we're like, okay. The core instruction is thirty credits.
Mm-hmm.
You gotta have eight credits of English, one credit of speech, two credits here, two credits here, two credits here.
Mm. Fifteen.
Six credits here.
One, two, five.
Which means four of these six credits, which I don't know if that's complicating.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um Two credits of government, two credits, or three credits of history, one credit of economics and financial literacy,
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
two credits of interdisciplinary humanities. Why is interdisciplinary capitalized? Um and one credit of health and of a health and wellness course.
Does foreign thing even capitalize?
I don't think so, I could be wrong. So then, language arts, dual credit engineering. Okay, that's health and wellness, so Go here. And move that there. We're, okay, but isn't that in the mathematics, that is in the mathematics, so How do we say it, twice, we say it multiple times? Okay, so I'm gonna just uh, so I'm gonna plan it out. And then Since we asked that I think that presentation cleans it up.
Mm-hmm.
So eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Twenty one. Twenty three. Twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty, okay. And then here, we've got Okay, we've just underlined uh Language arts. Mathematics. And then health and wellness, so we don't say anything, oopsies, I guess there's nothing significant about the social studies or science courses. Well, it says social studies, it say where, what do we have, anything or no? We don't have anything. Oh, it says courses, so for social studies, it says um courses such as geography, sociology, psychology, and world history uh may be offered as electives but are not to be counted as social studies requirement, so it has to be government,
You have the statute, you have it still up there, don't you?
U S history. Aloha who?
You have the statute still up there, what does it say in there?
This one?
Uh-huh. Oh no.
Right there.
That's what it says about, so biology, computer science, physical, and then that's what it says about social studies. Do you want all those narratives in there?
Why not?
Yeah.
That way, there's
Then it would do the same for humanities too, right?
Mm-hmm, but we don't have humanities listed. Yeah, interdisciplinary is the same as what they're calling humanities.
Yeah, we Yeah, you have it up there.
Okay, so let's
Is that what you were saying in the moment too?
Yeah, so that was in there, where did we get rid of it? What? That was the ones that um Somebody had pasted in there that had that three, fifteen, twenty two after it and all that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I took the, I took the numbers out, but I left the language in there. Oh. Oh, okay. But that was for mathematics. Oh. Um but it wasn't for all of everything. Oh, oh, gotcha. Um, science. Biology, computer science, physical science, or chemistry, and earth space environment, or approved applied sciences. We're trying to make it look uniform.
Mm-hmm.
Like it's intentional. Okay, so So we go Language arts, mathematics. So Maybe this explanation of the four credits of the six needs to be labs could be down here, so it's not so confusing.
I don't think it's confusing, but
Okay. So let's go to social studies. Oh, the board's done it. I am just not special. Ah, I guess.
Oh.
So, five credits are required, including, what are we doing, we're doing two credits of government, three credits of history.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so
Can we
Sure.
Go up for a second?
She's all, excuse me, but
No, you were back up to, can it just say like, can we do three, two, one, or one, two, three?
What do you mean?
'Cause it's like two, then three, then one, so
The numbers. They're not chronological. Oh!
Other, I mean
I just did that because that's how it was laid out.
I know, I know.
Okay.
It just
Alright.
It doesn't need to happen, it just might look more in my
Intentional? Yes, got it.
It just reads better.
Oh, you know. Okay, how's that, three, two, one?
Don't you think?
I would agree. No, I, yeah, not a problem, at all. Okay.
It's just a pet, it's just a thing, it's not
Yeah, if we're gonna make it look good, let's make it look good.
I know.
That's right. Um Okay, so social studies. Um Okay, so we have uh Government. Uh U S history. And economics. Okay.
And then uh this is just a question, I don't
Sorry. I think that's important to include in there.
Yeah. Um I know we probably have it somewhere, but because it's kind of part of that, is that a good place to put the civics requirement, or do we just have that lower?
Where's the civics requirement?
It's somewhere probably in our, I don't, I'm not looking at it, it's in there, it's at the bottom, 'cause it's a requirement. It's probably under, it's under that, it's right there here. I just, when you're talking about government, it just, it that kind of coinci- I don't know, it can be in there, since there'd be additional requirements.
No, I agree. Right.
I just don't, I mean, it probably makes better sense to be right here, but
I think you are correct.
So
Yeah, we sh- yeah, let's um, okay. So this is uh humanities. Maybe make this not it uh clear format. Make it twelve and color good. Okay. So up here we have arts and humanities, okay, so we're going to, oh, I forgot to make this red.
Mm-hmm.
Arts and humanities. So people can look down to see what's expected. Alright, um Really, no, I didn't mean to do that.
So the other would be the italicize, just like above, right?
Yes. Courses such as literature.
Um, if it's aligned. So maybe not, it's not italicized.
Well, I italicize this.
Right, is that saying that it, that it can't be counted?
Right.
This one is saying it could count.
Right, it may um
Um
uh may says that the humanities, if the course is aligned with the interdisciplinary humanities content standard.
Right.
So I do think that that's important to leave there.
No, I agree.
And we will italicize it, just so that kids and their parents know
Consistently. Yep.
if there's, um Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think we can put it in there.
But I think the rest of this is there.
Yeah, are you gonna just move the health over so it's
Well, it all needs to be realigned.
Okay.
That's gonna be for Olivia.
Right, it's gonna
I mean Okay, so health and wellness, in addition to the thirty required credits, students will need to take eighteen electives.
Mm-hmm. Like, is this in the forty page?
Right, students participating in season sports, um Is that what it says over here?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. Middle school credit, if a middle school student completes any required high school course of grade is C or higher. And the gr- okay, so I don't think we need to change call, okay.
Oh, but there's no longer, it's not, it's no longer called, they even comment about that, the eight is, the eight to six program. That's not gonna exist.
Oh, eight and six?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then will you go back up, Michelle, to what the statute that you were in, the narrative right there, 'cause does it say something about this?
So
Keep going. Right here, this is the language about middle school, right here.
Okay.
So we wanna just copy and paste that part. This is about the certification, yeah, there's
Sure, let's go, let's just um, where was the, oh, that's civics, whoop, there we are.
Um, right, there, yeah. Because this is the old one, and so I just don't know if it's gonna capture everything.
Look at it, it's quite large.
Oh.
Alright, so, look it up, clear formatting, getting so smart. It's amazing. Um Okay.
I'm just making the work hard, just to pick up all the subsections that looked in.
Oh wait. Middle school.
Twenty high school department, and the the this rule on that, um Such course with a grade of C or higher for entry in grade nine, the course meets the same concept that are part of the high school, the course is taught by the teacher, probably certified. Needs a federal for qualified, the student shall be given a grade system of that course in such grade number of credits, hours, and time, which are for students. And the appropriate student's parent or shall be notified in advance when credits are ready to be transcribed, and may elect to not have, I mean, it, the course is taken in the middle school period in the student's high school, so it shall camp to the purpose of high school. And it must meet the part of the credit in all high school courses, which is in subsection. I mean, it essentially says the same thing outside of the um the eight to six program, so, I mean, either it says the same thing pretty much. This one may read a little easier. This one may read a little easier.
So yeah, it's saying the same thing.
Suggestion number four says under the middle school credit change this sentence to include advanced opportunity rules, although the student's parent guardian may elect to not have the credits and the grade transfer to the student's high school transcripts unless the course was paid for by advanced opportunities funding.
Read differently.
Transfer this it's right there and you're just saying to add the advanced opportunity funding?
Unless the course was paid for by advanced opportunities funding.
That's what they're adding 'cause it doesn't say that though, right?
That's what I'm looking for, it doesn't say it in here.
I don't uh-uh.
It says it on the PDF, that's why I said this is.
It does say it on the PDF?
Yeah, it says um advanced opportunity funds are consenting to the course being transcribed on backup some. Or not the course that student families paying for the courses with advanced opportunities funds are consenting to the course being transcribed as a high school credit. That's how they say it. Their blurb is much more readable.
Their blurb is much more readable?
Mm-hmm. For middle school, just a middle school credits blurb. 'Cause they have they put all of it under this additional requirements, senior project, civics test, PE.
Mm. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you want me to copy and paste this since I'm on that same page and just add it?
Are you on the PDF?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, sweet. Okay, so I'm just gonna remove what I copied and pasted and reformat it because you know I'm not cool.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you paste it?
Mm-hmm. There you are. I'm not hooked, that's okay.
Oh.
I'll let you play with.
Okay.
Now you can just get rid of that really bad.
The last paragraph.
I think so.
Okay.
I don't think it I don't know that it talks about teachers, let's see.
Students um.
Yeah, so.
Hmm.
So they put the space they entered another space, another paragraph after ninth grade.
Yeah, they have it like this.
Yeah, there you go, thanks.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So there's only two requirements.
It's 'cause there's surely only one class. I mean surely we're talking about algebra. And I guess you could in summer school in IDLA take a sci- some science classes, you know, you could take some through IDLA I guess.
Okay. Well, I mean I know I I know of a child that actually was in eighth grade and took courses at the high school.
Yeah, right.
So that's where I think I mean I mean and it wasn't just math, it was just they were.
Mm-hmm. Right, right.
Okay, so.
So then this next whole section remember college entrance exams are no longer required, they're all optional now. So you could just put a si- you could either start being targeting out and not even reference it or you could put something in there and what the counselors are suggesting is students will have the option to take a college entrance exam at no cost in grades eleven or twelve.
She has a blurb.
So the state still provides a set date for the PSAT and the SATs and the ACTs.
Okay.
But it's not required for colleges anymore.
Okay, so what did she suggest students?
It's uh it's right there, it's number suggestion six, it's the last sentence. Students will have the option to take at no cost. College entrance.
Apparently nobody showed up, what the heck?
Only had three comment. Have we ever had that?
No.
No, that's what I said to Olivia.
No.
Ever?
I figure that'd be be like two people, you know.
For the rest of this you could literally strike through. Wonder if people are taking the last parts of their vacations. That's true, yeah, they squeeze it it all in before snow flies. Mm-hmm.
So it's just oopsies, delete that. At no cost to the student or the hallway.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so then senior project, any?
Determines what the project must include, so I'm gonna uh copy and paste from what the state department provides.
Oh, perfect.
And then you can look at it and see if you like that language different or better or just gonna put it right here. I feel like it basically says the same thing that we have there.
And they're required to do this senior project, okay.
Yep, there's a requirement.
A written report and oral presentation. Um so the only difference is they don't delineate it as an oral as a written and oral.
Right, they don't really define that.
Okay, does it have to be written and oral or is that what we're choosing?
I think that's what we're choosing.
Okay. So then yeah, this should just I guess all go away because it does.
It said the same thing. Yep.
Okay.
So the next part just um just notes that they are required to take the ISAT, it's not a graduation requirement but so I don't necessarily think this needs to be in here because it's just part of the ISAT, we are required to give it to eleventh graders but it's not it's no longer part of the graduation requirements. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And it's not even listed in the hi- the
Yeah.
from the state, so I don't even know if you need it in there other than they have to take it 'cause we are required to give it at eleventh grade. So.
So what happens to a kiddo that transfers into eleventh grade after the ISAT's been taken?
They weren't here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not a graduation requirement, it's just a standard requirement.
The same as it's it's mm-mm, it used to be at one point, I don't remember when but it's no longer.
Okay.
So and then civics is a requirement.
I'm a little confused by the LEA will determine the method and manner in which to administer the civics test. We had some debate over what the LEA was.
Uh like it's local educational agency, it's what the state calls sometimes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I know that I know they used to say.
I I hate that.
Well, remember and we've talked about that in some of the other policies, they'll say school district and then they say LEA and it's like why do you interchange it?
Yeah. Yeah.
From the state department it just says all secondary students meet must demonstrate they have met the state civics department standard by successful completing the civics test or alternate pass successful completion, this must be reflected on the student's transcript, so there's a test they take.
Right.
So. But when they talk about LVA and I don't love I think people don't know the difference, so I think districts better or school, I don't think LEAs are good
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
then people are like are you talking about the association or yeah.
Right. Yeah.
But it's local education agency, educational agency.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And they don't make it clear.
Okay, and then alternative programs, credit, was there anything?
Yeah. There isn't really anything from the.
Okay.
Um.
Honor roll. It's not correct, three point five for honor roll.
And they said to be a weighted class ranking.
And yeah, they did, and I did give a call to Jimmy but I never reconnected with him about why there is a weighted and unweighted GPA
They said.
'Cause there was some concern that it should only be weighted.
Did you see the comment from Mr. Everly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't.
Wasn't it on here?
It was on the doc, yeah.
Down there.
Yeah.
Further.
Down here it just says uh class rank is compiled.
No, he gave a comment.
Oh, he did?
Is it not here? I thought Michelle you responded to him.
No.
Oh yeah, right here he said um he said Skyward, I pulled up the comments, um here, do you want me to do it on here?
Okay.
Sure.
'Cause see if we all know.
I don't know why I erased it, that's so weird. Um it's right there and he gave a good explanation, so.
Oh, I know why it went 'cause he marked that's resolved accidentally.
Oh, okay.
I was like why did it go away?
It was like email me.
He marked it.
Weighted scale because currently students who show as a number one ranked student because it is based off of unweighted. If class ranking was determined by weighted we would get a much more accurate picture. Okay. And I didn't have a chance to follow back up with Jimmy 'cause I called him and he wasn't available and then he was like I saw you called and I'm like it's all good, I'll talk to you tomorrow and then that day never came.
Yeah.
So um.
My I I feel like my understanding is they're both in alignment with this.
That they want weighted?
Mm-hmm, but would you like me to call Jimmy and ask that question or text him?
Sure, 'cause I mean.
Right, half the time it's so hot in here you can't breathe and now time I'm like freezing to death, you know.
It's either one or the other.
Yeah.
So they're saying all transcribed courses? Do we want to state that? And is it over here? Do we say?
Do a control F and C of the transcript.
He didn't answer, but he says that he would make alignment, Brian.
Okay. Yeah, that's under the middle school. Okay. So if we change it to class rank is compiled from the overall weighted grade point average of the student which includes the grade point in the four major academic areas with emphasis placed on four years of mathematics, social studies, English, and science. But we're being asked that it should read class rank is compiled from the overall grade point of the student weighted and unweighted GPA will be considered, which includes the grade point in all transcribed courses.
Well, because aren't these essentially the four classes?
Well, states.
In fact, I guess the question is is would so you everybody has to take four Englishes, right? Could somebody take um and they have to take all the social studies, you don't really have a but um in math I could take based on this I could take three years of math and not do the fourth one 'cause it's not required, right? And then so then I I take an additional elective and then I have somebody that takes four math classes and they take calculus and they get an A minus, somebody else gets a A in an easier class. And so then they're weighted higher. That that this in my mind I read this, it's specific to the intensity and the the rigor of the classes if you're taking dual credit and
Right.
So that's why they're saying the four years of math, it's about the the higher end classes.
Right, and it does designate on the report card asterisk courses that are not eligible?
I don't know that the report card reflects that.
'Cause it says courses not eligible for GPA are designated with an asterisk on the report card. So if that's not accurate.
We must we might we must do it then, I I don't know that I can.
Would you see a line?
I will see if Ryan will answer this question, I'll ask him.
Since uh.
I will actually call him.
Okay. See, he's always anxious thing waiting our calls.
He's pretty good about getting back.
Yeah.
I just have never seen the asterisk on any of mine, so I can't speak to that.
Might just be from old policy.
Hey, in this policy there's a part when it talks about the class rank, it says courses not eligible for GPA are designated with an asterisk on the report card, do we do that? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna take it out, okay, thank you, bye. Is that basketball game? Bless this God, nice.
Okay. Alright. Alright, so waiver requirement. Um, graduation requirements will not be waived except as outlined in the early achievement, what I don't understand, portion of the policy. Okay, early completion of graduation, early achievement of college and career readiness and flexible schedule. So, yeah, um
We're done.
We are done, but there were two pa- there were this was broken out and it said early completion of graduation requirements, and then there was early achievement of college and career readiness and flexible schedule. I did combine them because they were saying the same thing.
Well, and I actually think it's combined here, I mean, they have it here too in all one big long.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, I SBA broke apart and it was just driving me nuts, I'm like, we're saying the same thing.
Okay, so we get to take twenty seven hundred P.
Okay.
Okay, we only have five minutes, so my question is twenty ten, I know Lisa's gonna say has to be done and we have agenda planning and we still need to do twenty seven twenty commencement, so my question is
Right.
'cause we're not gonna get this done, is would you like to do another Friday?
Yeah, no mind. Well, no, because we have got to get this all of these
But if we do this Friday and get a bunch of this done, can we put it on for Monday's agenda? Or when do you have to post the agenda?
Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Well
Tomorrow for everybody to look at it?
Technically, I guess I could push it out until Friday.
But you're not here on Friday.
Well, I'm gonna come in for half a day.
Okay, but I can't have a total one.
Are we done with uh this meeting?
What we have, yeah, we can go ahead and end this meeting since there's only five minutes left. So we'll go ahead and stop